So I'd like to bring the ordinance Subcommittee to order. In attendance, we have myself and Molly. There's only three members of the council on the Subcommittee. And I know Paul is probably not here and in California. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and looking for a motion to approve the minutes from March 17.
So moved.
This is so silly because there's only two of us, but I'll second it and I'll in favor.
Aye.
Moved and approved. We're now going to have a discussion on the Fair Rent Commission, Chapter 24, which I'm gonna defer to the Council. I have two glasses here. You need a pair?
I'm good. I think at this point, this this version incorporates all the changes that we have previously discussed. This committee has discussed the Fair Rent Commission ordinance at least two or three times already.
Yes, yes.
There were some changes suggested by this committee. One of them had to do with, let me see if I can find it. It had to do with the concern of getting a quorum and how many members would be on the commission. So for example, this is in Section 24-1 on page one, subparagraph B.
So not less than three.
Says not less than three, no more than seven, to give a to give a rein.
Okay.
And then rather than have specific numbers, two persons who are tenants, two who are landlords, three who are neither, and this was a suggestion from Councilman Kevin Arrow to say, "To the extent possible, appoint an equal number of tenants, landlords, and neither here nor there."
Right.
And that again was because of the concern with getting enough people on there and being locked into two, two and three.
Right.
So that was that was one change.
Okay.
The Fair Rent Commission itself also went over this again, even after that. They didn't have any issues with that. And I don't know, I think, I mean, this pretty much is what we agreed would be the the final version to present.
Just for the record, you know, when the Fair Rent Commission ordinance was passed, it used primarily the language from the statute. And we knew that it was going to need revisions once the commission was formed. So I think at this point, this has been on the agenda. I think this is probably the fourth time that it's been on the agenda. What I'd like to do, Molly, if you have any other questions for Corporate Counsel, or if not.
You know, I'll just know, I know there's no public comment portion of this, but Kevin Hayes is here. He's the chairman of the Fair Rent Commission. So I don't know if you want to ask him if he has anything to say? Okay.
Yeah, I think I'd rather not open that.
Okay.
Up, but I also hope you could stay for the, I hope that you can stay for the council meeting and and provide any support, you know, or I would imagine support since being on the commission, you would have.
Council meetings tonight?
Yes, immediately following this meeting. Okay.
Any other further questions? I'll back up on whatever he has to say that all our communications goes through Corporate Counsel.
Okay. And thanks for serving on it because not. So Molly, this is gonna need a a public hearing. So if you want to make a motion to support the the revisions that have been made and we can move it to Council to set a date for a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
So I'll second it and we're all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. So Heather, if we can talk to the mayor about getting this on the City Council for a public hearing. All right, moving on for discussion only on the signage for business owners during construction. I was hoping that Paul might be here, but.
Paul Conzens?
Yeah.
He just left.
He did?
I saw him walking down the back stairs.
Did he know it was gonna be on the agenda? There he is. Or Ray? Yeah. I'm raising that here. So this was brought up, you know, basically, basically from the public, you know, wanting to consider signage that would be provided either by the city or by a request to the state for the state roads, that they have better signage for the businesses who are within that construction area.
Right.
Right? Did you want to speak on it, Molly, at all?
Yeah, well, one of the thoughts that I had was going through Litchfield now that they have 202 closed, and you've got Merritt Clark Store right there. And what they did is a proposed signage throughout the entire detour area. So all the way down into Morris into Washington, there are signs for their store showing how to get there. And I thought it was a great idea. I think it's something that we should do in Torrington, you know, after talking with David Oliver and him having to close Cravings, although the roadwork was not the only reason. It was a big part of why he had to close. So if we're able to provide some sort of signage for these businesses, and I'm thinking about like Lily and Vine, you know, I went there to pick up prom flowers for my son. And unless you know Torrington well, you don't know how to get to that business through those backroads.
Right. So I think what I'd like to do, since it's only for discussion and Ray isn't here, I thought he would be here considering the other, maybe not. Anyway, what I'd like to do is invite Ray or Paul to come to the next ordinance committee meeting and request that they research other municipalities that might also have signage. I know the town of Farmington, I drive through there. I just came from Middletown to see whether or not there are any other, you know, ordinances that we can consider for for discussion. You got that in the minutes there, Heather? Okay. You have any other comments?
Well, I guess it'll be good to hear from them. I'm just not sure. And it'll be it'll be interesting to see. And I could, you know, send something out to the Camelisserv, the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys, to see if there are ordinances about that because I'm, part of me is thinking, I don't know that it needs to be an ordinance so much as a policy adopted by the department. So it could be talk to Paul and Ray and say, you know, maybe you as a department should have a policy about requiring signs during construction. Because the because the other part of it is be who would put those signs up? It could be something that they need to plug into the contracts they have with whoever's doing the work. And so I just tossed that out there. Maybe not an ordinance, maybe that, but I agree with you that it certainly merits discussion. Because I think you're exactly right. Unless you know your way around the ins and outs, you know.
Yeah.
Because Google Maps isn't gonna help you.
Also on that, can we find out, you know, if like, let's think about like Route 4 or something. When we've got all that roadwork going on over there, how is there a way that we can require state roads when there's work there and for the state to put up signs as well?
So both, yeah, I think if it turns out to be a policy, I think that's better than an ordinance, mostly for enforcement purposes. It's.
Yeah.
Anything to support businesses that are, you know, they're kind of suffering right now.
Yeah. Definitely a longer period of time. I mean, we want the roadwork to be done. There's no question about it. And the, you know, the intent of what it's trying to do in terms of railway and, you know, but I do think we need to look at that in consideration of our businesses. So, all right.
Thank you.
So you've got charged something to do now again? All right, thank you.
Add it to the list.
Add it to the list. All right. Number four, discussion on the flag ordinance.
Yeah, so I think what was attached to the agenda was a legislative research paper that was done back in 2024.
Yes.
And it discussed, you know, describing the issue. My research isn't really any different than this, and I think that the basic idea is that there are a lot of problems if a municipality allows private individuals to raise flags on their flag, on the city flagpoles. So it really needs to be governmental speech, so governmental speech is protected. And then if it's governmental speech, so it's the town itself, then you don't need to make the flagpole available to anybody who wants a presence there. So if it's considered private speech, then you really have to make it available to anybody. You can't make any, basically, you can't exclude anybody almost for any reason. So in Torrington, we raise flags on the day we have, then celebrate the Italian mayor, the Irish mayor, and the mayor. And in the last couple of years, the city has raised the, I guess what's called the Christian flag at some point. I discussed this with the mayor and she and she essentially described all of those as being, well, that was the city honoring the Italian mayor of the day, the Irish mayor of the day, and the Christian flag relates back to the fact that in the early days of Connecticut, yeah, at that point in time, you had to have an ecclesiastical presence. There had to be like a church, almost like that was the sponsor of the municipality in order to get a charter.
Right.
So that that raising the Christian flag was, you know, celebrating the fact that it was the first church, the first congregational church, which is in West Torrington on Route 4, Route 4 and Riverside Avenue, that was was essentially, you know, our Torrington's sponsor, if you will, that that was the point of raising that flag. The discussion, though, about whether there should be an ordinance or not, and I think there could be an ordinance, and I haven't drafted anything yet, but my thinking from what I've read so far is that the ordinance should say that flagpoles can only be used for official governmental speech by the city of Torrington, which should be evidenced by a proclamation, which is what the mayor does, I believe, right? On the Italian mayor for the day, the Irish mayor for the day, there's there's a proclamation that it's like, it's the city that's doing it. So, you know, I think I draft an ordinance that says that, that only flags that constitute, you know, governmental speech by the city as evidenced by a proclamation can be flown from city flagpoles. And I think then that that would cover it.
Yeah, I noticed on the O L R research, on page four, you know, when the decision that was made in that, in that court case, some of the towns did adopt other types of, but I think what you're proposing is far more general, far more what has been the practice of the flag raising, but we just haven't had it as an ordinance.
Right.
So I think putting it in as an ordinance that with the language you just use is great.
Something like that.
Yeah.
So I will draft something for the committee to consider.
Yeah. I know there were, in that section on page four, they had talked about, you know, the council adopting another resolution, but I think if we have it as an ordinance, you sort of get away from having to have resolutions. You know, it's basically on whatever proclamation is given from the mayor's office. I think that's great.
Okay.
Hopefully it will end there. Any other comments, Molly?
Nope, not at all.
Okay. Number five, the discussion on the Chapter 20, which is the Economic Development Commission. Not sure who put that on the agenda.
I think William Wallach. There he is.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hi.
Sorry, can make it in person babysitter conflict.
No, no, that's okay. Nice kitchen, though.
Thank you.
So since you requested to have this on the agenda, I'd like to have you sort of let us know what you're you're thinking about.
Absolutely, it'd be my pleasure. So we have two committees. One is the Arts and Culture. It's technically the Arts, Culture and Tourism Act is the acronym. Sorry, take that back. Let me get my bearings. It's Arts and Culture Torrington. It's not Arts and Culture Tourism. Arts and Culture Torrington, ACT, is the committee, and the other committee is the EDC. So when I came on board in June of last year, neither was a functioning commission. They had less than two members on each commission. And so in February this year, the City Council appointed nine new members to the EDC. And I had talked to the mayor back and forth about what to do with the ACT Commission, the Arts and Culture Commission. The issue is that with the newly formed CDC, the Cultural District, in 2022, a lot of the responsibilities that ACT would normally take were supplanted by the duties and responsibilities of the Cultural District. So we had some duplication of efforts with the, you know, the Cultural District becoming a more thriving organization, more engaged as they grow and mature. The the idea of standing up a full Arts and Culture Torrington Commission again seemed less plausible when weighed against the idea of taking those duties and responsibilities of the Arts and Culture Commission and enveloping them into the Economic Development Commission. And so what I did was I went through a review of Chapter 3 and Chapter 20, so Chapter 3 being the ACT, and Chapter 20 being the EDC, and took all of the duties and responsibilities that were in the Arts and Culture Committee and put them into the EDC as a proposed change to the ordinance. I included an attachment in my memo with the proposed changes. And on the last page of that memo is the attachment. And it's all of the duties that were part of the Arts and Culture Commission would now be undertaken as part of the Economic Development Commission. And those duties would also be replicated by the Cultural District. Now looking at it, I realized I did not include Chapter 3 in my memo for you to kind of go through and review and verify what had been the Arts and Culture Commission. So from there, what I did was I proposed this to the now standing EDC members, in which they took a commission vote on these proposed ordinance changes to Chapter 20. And that vote happened last month at the regular EDC meeting to recommend presenting these changes to the ordinance committee for, with the with the hope that these duties and responsibilities would be now incorporated into the EDC. I could go on about why Arts and Culture plays a role in economic development and a pretty significant role. And I think it's well placed to have these duties and responsibilities in EDC and not in a standalone organization. If you'd like, I can continue going on.
So have you had any opportunity to look at this?
I did. I worked with William when he first proposed this, and I agreed with him that there was a lot of duplication and overlap, and it didn't make sense, especially where they were having trouble getting members. It made sense. So what, as he points out in his memo, what'll also go along with this is a is a resolution that revokes
They've put it in.
Three, yeah, 3A-5.
So it revoked the entire Chapter 3A.
Right, yeah. So that'll, basically, the Arts and Culture Commission will be completely eliminated. And as as Mr. Wallach points out, what they were charged with is included in the Chapter 20 and some of the changes. There's not a lot of changes. There was a lot of.
Hey, I don't, I always like to see what the original ordinance is, and I don't have my book with me, but, and then highlighting the changes. But if you're nuts, you know, where where do we integrate?
Yeah, and I, I don't have that with me either, so I don't.
Okay. This is not like, you don't have like a timeframe that you need to have this done. Right, William?
That's a good question. No, there's not. The only thing I really think is for consideration is, I think the sooner either an ordinance change is directed or at least public opinion is is offered, that I think the sooner that the EDC will like take on all these duties and responsibilities. Alternatively, the sooner we get a determination that, if a determination is that we're not going to repeal Chapter 3 and keep in Arts and Culture, then I can start recruiting and getting members to join Arts and Culture. I I don't intend to recruit for Arts and Culture until I get a determination on whether we're going to proceed or not.
Because right now.
Unless directed otherwise.
The two, looks like you just have the two members who have terms through 2026, Molly Hogan and Edward Kenada.
That's correct.
So the others are really expired.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't really have any, you know, comment on it other than I do feel that as long as somewhere in the new ordinance, it has some of the language of, and you know, maybe you can point it out to me, but something to oversee the arts and cultural, what was their prominent function.
I can, I could certainly work on that. I would like to point out that in the ordinance recommendation that I provided, part of the task, or one of the tasks or duties and responsibilities for the EDC would be to work with other commissions, other nonprofit organizations, which would include the Cultural District in their mission, which was not there previously. And in talking to the EDC members, they all felt that that was an important portion that was kind of left out in their engagement with other organizations.
I mean, I agree with you. It would be good to have a side by side.
Yeah. Yeah, and I do, I know that you put it under 20-7, A2, examine the conditions of existing businesses, industry, arts and culture and tourism in the city of Torrington. So, you know, even even myself, who I've served for a long time on the council, I do feel that there is some confusion, you know, because you have the Commission on Arts and Culture that gets some funding or some oversight of the Torrington Development Corporation. So that's a that's a Subcommittee of TDC. And I don't know how active they have been. From what I understand, they've done quite a bit, particularly as it relates to the Warner and the Nutmeg. But it's confusing for someone, okay, what am I volunteering on? Even, I'm talking about recruitment. So if, you know, you talk to Molly, Molly Hogan and Edward Kenada and say, you know what, we are going to cover the function, some of the functions of the, all the acronyms, AC, what is it, Arts and Culture?
ACC.
ACC. And we'd like to have you join the TDC, EDC. See what I mean? I don't know.
You know, I think it's a good point. And just for discussion, Molly Hogan was considered an approach to join the EDC, the Economic Development Commission. However, she didn't have the residency qualification for the city of Torrington, so she was not eligible. So that is part of our initiative in, speaking on behalf of the EDC, that's part of their initiative to actively recruit people who are representing the Arts and Culture area. I do want to note that the Cultural District is under the purview of TDC. And the Cultural District is geographically tied to the Cultural District, whereas the Arts and Culture Torrington is not. It's all of the city of Torrington, as is the EDC is all of the city of Torrington, not exclusive to any geographic area.
Right, you're right. Well, I don't have any objection to the proposed ordinance or to repealing section unless, you know, I mean, it will go to the public. So if there was really any comments, negative comments regarding repealing that that Chapter 3A as it relates to the Arts and Culture Commission. Molly, do you have any comments?
No, I know that this has been talked for a while. I think it even was brought up when Rista was here, when I served on EDC. So I, I think it's a good idea. I know we've been struggling to get people to volunteer for boards for a long time, so.
Well, I almost feel like at this point, you know, to move it along so that William can, this might help with his recruitment, that we, you know, move it from this committee to a public hearing and to the council.
Sure. Yes.
You good with that?
Yes.
Since Corporate Counsel has had his fingerprint on it, which always makes a difference, William? Sometimes.
That's something. Yeah, and I guess if you look at it more carefully, if you wanted to bolster, you know, the Arts and Culture piece of it, you could incorporate some more of the language that's in Section 3A into Section 20-7 to put more of an emphasis on the Arts and Culture piece of it.
Yeah.
You know, which could, on one hand, could kind of be be fluff, because William did include, so like, for example, in 20-7-2, he added the words Arts and Culture.
Yeah.
In there. And then in subparagraph four, let me go back to that. Right, subparagraph four, the same thing, added the words cultural activities. Right, community engagement in cultural activities. So I think that's what what William was thinking would cover it, kind of suck in from, you know, Section 3A, some of the wording there.
Yeah.
And you could, you could put more of it in there if you wanted to.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the composition. So each member shall be a resident elector of the city. So is that the current language for the?
The economic development?
Yeah.
So that's from the general statutes as well. That's really, it's a requirement in general Connecticut, Connecticut general statutes.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the language now is nine persons, not more than five of whom may be of the same political party.
Right.
Each member shall be a resident elector of the city.
Okay, and that's the language that's by statute has to be in there? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm not telling you that. I don't know.
William is.
Oh, William, that's that's statutory?
That, in formulating EDC, that's that's the statutory regulations under forming an EDC. And that's what the, that's, you're based, I'm pre-stated, that's how the ordinance was written. Because of that, it's almost directly out of the statutory language.
I didn't quite get that.
He said, can you repeat yourself?
Louder.
So the EDC was formed, I believe, in 1991. And when it was formed, it was based off of the statutory language. And that's, that's exactly what, in 20-2, that's almost word for word exactly what the statutory language is.
Can we see what it is in 2025 at this point? Because we know how statutes change. Can we just check on that?
Okay.
You know. Not that I'm questioning you. I just feel like at this point, it might be important to make sure we have the right language, you know, and I say that only because if they're a resident, um, Molly could be on the Arts and Culture Commission, but not on the ECD is what you're saying? Because she's not a resident?
They don't have that requirement for arts and culture.
Can we look at that?
Yeah, I'll look at that.
I think we could still move it if you're in agreement, Molly, um.
EDC, I, I, I recognize where you're going, uh, Councilwoman Rhett. That the membership on the EDC is more restrictive than it is on Arts and Culture, and so that could be limiting in, in our exposure to arts and culture. I would say that the EDC is open to form commissions with non-committee members as well. So there are mechanisms to bring in people into the fold that aren't necessarily members of the EDC.
Right, because I know with the Arts and Culture, like, all these confused.
Commission.
The commission, the, well, actually, the, the, um, mission that, not the commission, the subcommittee that TDC oversees. So there are members on that, you know, who are not residents, who are, um, with the Warner, with the Nutmeg, correct? We, are we having?
No, that's right. You're correct. Sorry, screaming kids in the background.
All right. If we could just check on that piece of it, you know, as we move it forward to, um, again, a public hearing and a, and a just put it on the agenda for the council. I mean, they've been waiting a long time to get this moving. I don't want to delay it just because of some language. Okay? Molly, you want to move it?
I will move that.
And I'll second it, and we're both in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you, William. Go be a dad. Oh, that was quick. I think so. All right. So next on the agenda is, um, number six, discussion on Chapter 194 for vehicles and traffic. Again.
I don't know anything about that one.
I know. Molly, who'd we get that one from?
Um, Sergeant Baldus, I believe.
And I've been begging him to give me stuff, and where is he? Oh, oh, we have the chief. Even better. Sorry, I have been bugging Sergeant Baldus to give us some, I know he's got a list of ordinances he wanted to have reviewed, so. Thank you, Chief, for coming.
Yeah, Sergeant Baldus is on vacation.
Okay.
As it relates to that agenda item, uh, and Section 194 of the ordinance is, most, most of it is language, is clearing up the language to today's, um, standards. A lot of it is, a lot of the language is antiquated. But specifically, um, you know, there's something such as, if, if you, you want to go through each item that we're talking about?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. We have, we have the time to do that.
All right, if you go to, um, Section 194.3, we're looking to eliminate that complete section because it speaks of, uh, St. John, uh, St. John's Place. That speaks of Franklin Street, which is no longer a, a thoroughfare.
Right.
Um, and that, um, that, that specific part of the ordinance refers to traveling on that, on those areas.
Okay.
So it just, it doesn't make sense to have that anymore because it's not usable.
Right.
Um, and if you notice, uh, I, I don't know if, you know, we, there should be a strikeout on your, um, your, your copy. Uh, and there should be a, um, an explanation concerning that under.
Yes, it does.
Uh, winter parking ban, 194.4, on page three, uh, there's a spelling error, so just to correct the spelling error. Also, 194.4.2, blocking the box prohibited, those are those boxes that you see out in front of the driveways that prohibits vehicles from parking there from, and if there's a traffic light, like, for example, the purpose of this one here is to add one for Water Street to consider the fires headquarters on Water Street. Uh, so if there's a traffic light at Prospect and Water, traffic, as it's getting backed up, doesn't park in front of the fire station in case they have a, uh, an emergency. So we're just adding, we want to amend that to add, uh, 111 Water Street. Section 194.5, definitions, uh, we now go, we've gone beyond just coin payment into the meters, so we just want, we struck out coin and just added payments to reflect, uh, that would be cash, credit, debit, um, people would be able to pay, uh, for various, uh, options there.
Right.
Section 194.6, uh, again, just changes, uh, strikes out board and places as the parking authority shall in its judgment. Uh, again, a language change. And it's the same, there's two sections there, you'll see, uh, further in the middle of the paragraph, parking authority, again, board is struck and parking authority is replaced, replaces board. Uh, and there's a, the amendment gives the explanation there if you can see underneath that.
Thank you.
Section 194.7, uh, permit parking programs. Our fees, um, in the city have been, uh, very low over the past several decades. Uh, we're looking to come up with the times. We've spoken to several municipalities throughout the area to get a uh, comparable as to what they're charging for fees. Uh, we're still in the low end of the, of the section, and as we move on to, um, additional areas, uh, in this ordinance, you're going to see that we've asked for an increase in the fees. But Section 194.7, uh, Commerce Parking Permits, uh, subsection A, uh, to increase that from $12 to $18 per month and $48 quarterly, or 100, and then the $144 annually is going to be the, what we can currently have. Right now, it's $12 and $36 for quarterly, so we want to increase that fine, increase that, that fee structure there. Uh, and it also talks, again, you see that in the amendment. Commerce permit, Section 2, uh, we strike out not to exceed 15% of a specific lot's capacity. And then to put it at the discretion of the parking authority and can be restricted or limited to, uh, based on what the, uh, the current parking, um, parking lot would be able to hold as far as vehicles, while at the same time, uh, ensuring that the people that do park downtown, uh, will have the ability to park. And, and it explains that in the amendment. Uh, Section B, Part B, subsection B, Downtown Residential Parking Permit Program. Uh, again, it strikes out from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM and adds and are sold for day only, night only, or combined use. Then it strikes out unless otherwise determined by the parking authority. Um, so we're just going to issue those, uh, permits. And then you have, uh, daytime permits are valid between the hours of 8:00 and 6:00 PM. Nighttime permits are valid between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 AM and are offered for use uh, through December through March, which is during our winter parking ban, uh, which we, which the, uh, ordinance committee had amended a couple of years ago, uh, to shorten that winter parking ban. Uh, Section, uh, B2, um, this is one that, um, is, is concerning for us. We don't, there, there's a, a, a fee structure or a permit structure in there. Uh, if you see struck out, the quarterly permits will be sold for $150 per, per, uh, permit or annually for $600 with one-time advance annual payment. We feel that that $600, we don't know where that actual figure came from. Um, but we think, think that's extreme when we're trying to develop our downtown area and we're looking at, um, uh, the, the buildings downtown and we're, and we have developers that are turning these buildings into apartment, uh, complexes and apartments for, for people. Um, it's, parking is at a, is at a very minimum downtown, and the $600, uh, we feel is a little bit too high for an annual fee. Uh, our, uh, our recommendation is that, um, as you see, there's a fee structure. I don't need to go, go through it all, but it would be, um, basically $192. Resident permits are sold in periods of one month, four months, or annually with the below-listed rates, plus applicable sales tax. So, um, it would be more, um, beneficial for, uh, those people who are coming to the city of Torrington, coming to the center of town, who, who want to reside in these apartment buildings and have an ability to park somewhere. Uh, we also are aware that, um, some of these residents, uh, who are in these apartment, um, uh, who are living in some of these apartments are making arrangements with some of the local, um, private areas, such as the Warner Theater, and paying quite a lot, a lot, a lot less uh, for some parking, um, uh, permits or parking fees. Uh, and, and with, when, when you consider that, the city is losing, and, and again, it's not a, it's really not about revenue, but they are, we are losing some revenue as a result of people finding cheaper alternatives. Uh, we feel that this is just a more reasonable, um, uh, pricing fee or permit fee for people who are looking to, who live downtown and who need some parking.
Chief, can I just ask you, I mean, with that $600, were we collecting that $600 from?
Very rarely were we reflecting that. And, and again, uh, a lot of the residents who are, several of the residents who are, um, specifically the, the buil, the building here on City Hall Avenue, uh, have made arrangements with the Warner, I believe, it's my, our understanding that, so they have some designated parking areas for the Warner and they're paying the Warner a small, an extremely, uh, smaller fee compared to the $600. Uh, whereas, uh, if the city, if we had this 100, this structure, uh, it would be a revenue, uh, it would generate some revenue for our parking authority through, uh, the collections of these permits.
Would it allow, I mean, particularly in that area, I feel like, um, area close to the library, there's a lot more parking, um, available.
We, we.
I feel like this parking lot could fill up very quickly with annual permits.
Well, again, it would be, uh, it's, it's restricted and it's based on, um, on, on what the parking authority is going to determine is going to be allowable for certain parking places. It doesn't mean that we're going to issue permits for the entire, for example, if you're talking City Hall Avenue parking lot, we're not going to issue permits to fill up that parking lot with residents, uh, because we recognize that there's businesses in the area and people also need parking for, um, you know, for, to conduct business here at City Hall and regardless. And, and as you notice, in, in that, um, section, it does talk about, um, the, the restrictions as to the times that they'd be able to park there.
Okay. So you know the, the comments are going to be made mostly on this page, page five.
Page five.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because you're talking about fee increases or in one case, a decrease, but.
It would be a decrease here, correct.
Okay.
But the fee structure seems to be a little bit more reasonable.
Yeah.
For people. Uh, and then, um, to your question, Councilwoman, um, you just asked, uh, Section 5 on page 6 at the end, there is, it would be at the discretion of the parking authority and can be restricted and limited to preserve municipal availability for the general public. So, uh, again, we would be, uh, we would be analyzing that and make a determination as to how many vehicles can actually park in, uh, designated areas.
So the parking authority is made up primarily of your team?
I, officially, I'm, as a police chief, I'm the parking authority for the city, and my designee would be Sergeant Baldus, who's a traffic division, uh, commander, who oversees a traffic division.
Okay.
Uh, Section C, uh, visitor passes, uh, visitor passes may be purchased for downtown resident visitors or guests to the city for events lasting a full day or longer. Day pass parking will be promoted in locations and lots as determined by the parking authority unless otherwise prohibited by posting. All-day pa, pass parking must be pre-issued permit only by the parking authority. Day passes are not transferable between registered vehicles. That's an add, we're adding that to, uh, to the, uh, ordinance. C1, passes are valid for 124-hour period with the ability to purchase multiple passes for no more than seven consecutive calendar days. Section 2, visitor passes are sold through the city's parking authority at a rate of $10 per registered vehicle per day. We struck out overnight visitor permits and, uh, the first sentence and the last sentence has been struck. Section D, prohibition on permits for commercial vehicles. Uh, again, just, uh, it, it's a, uh, gram, a grammar thing, we want to put that in, uh, capital letters.
Yeah.
Um, page 7, 194.8, uh, there's obsolete language in that that we're asking to strike out, which is on and by its dial and pointer. We don't even know what that is anymore. So that, that's an old, uh, old part of this ordinance. Page 8, uh, 194, Section 14, Use of Funds, it's just to change the numbers as, as we're amending this specific ordinance is the, uh, the articles are changing as well. So just to amend that. It's the same with article, with the next section from, uh, 194.14 to change that to 194.15. And then, uh, Section C, uh, we're going to strike double after 10 days and triple after 30 days. Uh, to, it'll be an increase, we're just striking that out and just leaving increase in accordance with 194.16 after 10 calendar days and after 30 calendar days. It just clears the language up.
Chief, if I might, I, I took a quick look at this before I came down today, and I think in subsection C, the reference to the increase in accordance with Section 194.16.
That's going to, I'm sorry, that's going to be 194.17.
Right.
Yes, correct.
And then the next, the last line, when it says the appeal right in connection with 194.15, that would be 194.16.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
Can we make that change now? I mean, so it can.
Yep.
You're following us, right, Heather?
Are you on the, you on the same page as we're on, Heather?
I can help you.
Yeah.
Page eight.
All right. You've got your help. Yeah.
And you know, to, to that end, Chief, and I think sometimes the, the, right, Heather, the company that we use to put this on the, they go through the sections, make sure all the references are correct. Because part of what I'm thinking, Chief, is if you're deleting 194.3 in its entirety, the next section on page two is 194.3.1, that could just become 194.3.
Or four.
Right.
Three, correct. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
But that's something I think.
Yeah.
When it's going to get codified, we can just make sure that.
Yeah.
Everything gets caught up.
Okay.
Okay. Page nine, um, 194.16, that's the appeals process. Subsection A, should an owner, operator have outstanding delinquent over 30 days past due parking tickets, they are hereby ineligible for requesting an appeal hearing on any current parking tickets until such time as said delinquent fines are paid in full. A1, appeal request and administrative review of the ticket will be completed based on the information, evidence provided by the owner, operator, and a decision will be rendered by the traffic division. An owner, operator may request a hearing within 10 days following a decision being rendered under an appeal request. And subsection 2, uh, hearing request or review of the ticket will be made by the appointed hearing officer as outlined below. And then that, everything is standard, stays the same. Section D, uh, adding any person by electronic mail or by, by mail uh, for an appeal, and it goes on, uh, written demand for an appeal or hearing within 10 days of the date of issuance of the parking ticket or within 10 days of the first notice outlined in subsection B of this section. Uh, subsection E, branding by either mail or electronic mail, as we're now using, uh, email. Section H, either in person or by video call.
Yeah.
Section, page 10, uh, we have, there, there's an explanation there under, uh, subsection P, gives the amendment, and those are the changes that we're, we were talking about in that, uh, specific, uh.
Thank you.
Uh, ordinance section. 194.17, this is where fines and payments and escalation schedules. Again, we, as I stated earlier, we had, um, uh, checked with other municipalities and departments, uh, regarding, uh, the current fee structure. These are the, uh, this is a, um, a, a pretty standard fees, our fees are pretty, uh, low, um, within our community and with our city, and we're asking that these fees be increased to these specific, uh, items as indicated here. Any questions?
These are comparable to other municipalities you had mentioned, could you?
Uh, for example, we looked, uh, New Millford, Stanford, Waterbury, West Hartford, West Hartford's fees are extreme, are very high. I mean, these, this fee schedule is not, uh, very high, and it's not very low, it's kind of in the middle of where other municipalities stand regarding, um, the fee structure related to parking offenses.
Okay.
Do you want me to go over each one, or do you, or?
No, I mean, I don't think, I think, again, should this move for a public hearing, um, and those are the pages that are going to have, uh, questions or?
Yeah, I, I think so. And if you look at the, um, on page 11, we have what, what the current fee structure is.
Yeah.
Um, so we're looking to, uh.
Right, so you, you're going from like the too close, just as an example, to too near a corner, corner, you're going up from 15. Uh, wait a minute, where are we? No, I guess it doesn't compare, does it?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Goes up to 24, is that?
It was 25, it'll go up to 50.
Right. When was the, when were these, when was this fee structure sort of put into place?
The, the old, the old fee structure?
Yeah.
I think it's been in place, uh, since ordinance was adopted. It's been, um, we, we haven't seen an increase in our fee structure for an extended period of time, and that's why when we reviewed, when Sergeant Baldus reviewed this, um, uh, you know, this ordinance and, and what the current fee structure is, uh, we've, we feel that there's a need for, uh, to, to come to our current modern times, uh, and, um, adjust this fee structure to what is.
Do we know, I mean, do we know a, the date that this was?
I don't.
The original? Do we know, I mean, do we know a date that this was, the original?
Off the top of my head.
10 years, 20 years?
I don't know, ma'am. You have any idea?
Yeah. All right, well, I just, you know, I think that's where the comments will probably come in, but.
Yeah.
And, and what's your collection? I mean, so the enforcement of some of these fees and fines, I'd be also curious to know how much, how much have been collected?
I have that for you.
We don't need to answer that now, but I think we sort of need to prepare for those questions, right?
So if you, if we look at statistics for 2024, our department had issued a total of 3,268 tickets throughout the city. And we collected $79,700 in those, those fees. And a lot of it, most of it, a lot of it's meter, metered violations, but it would include other violations as well. We also have a, you know, there's a rate of unpaid tickets as well that we are, we're using, we're looking at potentially using a collection agency to do, to, to go after or to obtain those fees that people have not paid. So again, we, we issue, you know, a couple of thousand tickets per year. Of those, of that 3,268 tickets that have been issued, 1,446 were residents of our city. Everything else was, was residents outside of our city who came in, who violated some of the parking issues that we had in our town. And we're therefore, this enforcement action was taken against those.
And you probably give these, this data more to the Board of Safety, not because.
Say that again, ma'am.
We don't, you get, you give this data probably more to the Board of Safety versus.
There's a traffic report that every month that goes to the Board of Public Safety.
Right. Okay.
Yep. But not, not the fee structure? I don't think it was a fee structure. Yeah. Some of the amendments of the 2023 was a result, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, was when residential apartments started developing in our community and we were discussing overnight parking and some of the fee structures.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
But I don't believe it was actually the violations fees that we were, that were discussed as far as.
It might be good to have that information when we, you know, sort of bring it for the council. I'd like to have it anyway, would you? You know, when those fees were, you know, how old they are.
Yeah.
You know, so if you're saying 2017 was, yeah. 1996, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, that's right.
And actually, the overnight parking, I think that was another part of that 2023 change because that, that's, that's relatively recent with the winter parking ban was part of that.
And you probably had different way to collect, you know, I mean, your, your data from, that you give out to the Board of Public Safety is probably reflective of some of that too.
Yes.
All right, I don't really have objection, I think we can move on, but I think it's the fees that's probably going to have the, the most conversation. And I think just in preparation for that.
Okay.
It goes to public hearing.
Sections C, D, and E, again, discuss when fines are due. It just explains kind of further defines the, how fees will be collected and paid. And that goes as well as hot top, page 12, section F and G, all basically the same thing.
Corporation council, did you have a comment?
Well, just when you were talking about, I agree, the fees will probably get some discussion, but I remember the, I think it was a city council meeting where during the public comments session, there was an individual who was very upset about the ban on overnight parking in the winter months. So maybe that people are going to talk about that, but it strikes me, chief, that their remedy is they can purchase an overnight parking permit for a parking lot. Is that kind of the way you look at it?
Are you referring to municipal lot counselor or a?
Well, you have a provision in here for the purchase of overnight parking permits.
Correct. And that would be for residents only, that's only residential. Those are only people that are residing in apartments that are being constructed within the downtown area.
Oh, just downtown.
Correct. It's not, it's not meant for anybody, it's specific to the residents that are living within the downtown area so that we can give them an opportunity, so that we can bring people into the downtown area that they'll have a place, you know, where they live, they'll have a place to park their vehicles. Because as you know, parking is at a premium in our, in our downtown area.
Yeah.
So this allows the residents to park their vehicles there.
Okay. I think you might get some pushback on that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 19418, change the section number again, it's just a section number change. 19419, because again, it's another section number change, but it talks about wheel immobilization devices, those are the boots that we put on vehicles for people that are not paying their vehicles if we're aware of them. And it, and that increases the fee as well. If you go to section F, from 25 to $75 for such immobilization. So there would be a fee associated with the boot that's put on vehicles. And it further explains the, if you look at amended, explains the change there. On page 14, again, it just changes, changing the ordinance articles, you change art from article three to article four, which is the snow emergency plan. 19420, 21, 22, 23, 24 are all adjusted articles.
Yep.
To the counselor's point earlier, second A, instead of 19416, that would be 19417 because it refers to the fees associated with violations. Page, I'm sorry.
I think we have like two more pages left and we're almost to the end of our timeframe before our council starts, but I'm okay with the other parts of it. I feel, you know, at this point, this is, we've been waiting for this for a while from police department. And part of me feels like with some of the questions I think that I've asked and I think corporate counsel in terms of concerns that might come up.
Yeah.
I do think we should move this forward if you're in agreement, Molly.
Yes.
Move forward to a public hearing and to go into the council agenda. So can you make that motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second it and we're both in favor.
Okay.
All right. But I think in preparation for that, you may want to, you know, have a little more of that history.
Yeah.
But thank you for your work and Sergeant Baldus. You know, Molly, you may not know, but we've been sort of looking for this kind of change in an amendment set, you know, have come from his department, so. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're gonna, next item on the agenda, probably.
I, you know, I'm not sure we're going to have time. Is it your agenda item?
It's very briefly, it's, it's on the.
Yes, it is on the agenda, okay? If the mayor's going to allow us, we'd like to go to that next, our number seven, discussion on the new speed enforcement ordinance.
Yeah, very briefly, what this is, is that as you know, the state has now, there's a state statute now that allows municipalities to utilize electronic means of monitoring different traffic violations, specifically red light traffic cameras and speed enforcement cameras. Many municipalities are heading in the direction of using speed enforcement cameras. And what this a lot, it doesn't, this doesn't necessarily mean that our city is going to go in that direction, but what it does is that the statute requires that an ordinance be put in place prior to us having any discussions or looking into potentially using speed enforcement cameras throughout the city in problem areas. And it's about public safety, it's about slowing down the traffic. Specifically what are my, my discussions with Sergeant Baldus is that the speed enforcement cameras would be utilized if we were to move in this direction in school zones. When you look at Prospect Street, you have, you have the Vogel Wetmore School, you have St. John Paul the Great, you have the YMCA, it's a straight shot. We now have the bike path that's on Prospect Street, a speed enforcement camera, that might be a good deterrent to keep traffic slow on Prospect Street. When we look at Torringford School, we have Torringford West Street, which is a straight shot from Kennedy Drive to East Main Street, a speed enforcement camera for the school zones might be something worthwhile or us, us exploring. If we are going to put into any kind of a speed enforcement program, it would be the Board of Safety and the councils approve, under the Board of Safeties and Council approval. But before we can even entertain that, we need the ordinance. This ordinance is, it was taken through from several different municipalities, put together, this is a boilerplate ordinance for the speed enforcement cameras that is required by the statute for using these types of devices.
So in respect for time and, and really more questions and discussion, I would like to put this on the next agenda for the ordinance committee. You know, I'm, our councilman, Cavanaro isn't here and I think it's, it's so new, it's a new ordinance that I think it deserves more of a presentation on your behalf and also more of a discussion on the, on our committee. So if we could add that to the next ordinance committee agenda. Sorry, we didn't get to have more of a conversation about it. So any other business from the committee members?
No.
All right, I've moved to adjourn.
Moved.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I was just researching the economic.
Okay, let's call this regular meeting of the city council to order. For the record, today is Monday, July 21st, 2025, and it is 6:35 PM. We have a quorum of council members attending, we have three council members here at the, in City Hall, Councilman Iven, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Ruette, and participating via Zoom, I see Councilman Waldron and Councilman Oliver. That constitutes a quorum. With that said, before we begin the agenda, could we kindly pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Item number one, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for public comment.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time?
My name is Michael Ben Zurich, B-A-N-Z-I-R-U-K, a resident, taxpayer and property owner here in the city of Torrington. The most embarrassing item on the agenda tonight is item number eight, which is for this city council to vote in order for the mayor to orchestrate an IAM with the town of Litchfield for the use of our owned sewage system. This has not been brought up to the public for many a year for discussion. The way the AMA is written is disadvantageous to we, the people of Torrington that own our system. Especially in the AMA, if any of you have read it, there's a word in there in regards to a shared system. It's not a shared system. It is owned by us solely. It is rented, it is leased, it is contracted to another municipality. Nothing is shared. The nomenclature on this, I brought up December 17th, 2017, in the Republican American after the meeting. And at that time there, I stated, our sewer fees in the city of Torrington people are nothing but a charade as compared to out of towners, which is officially called now non-jurisdictional. We, the people of Torrington, received a bill last month of $426. How much are the people of Litchfield paying? That's the way it works, as Mayor Eleanor Carbone is smiling. This is nothing but a charade and the people have not been involved in this orchestration of an AMA for over two years. I've discussed this many times with Councilman Cavanaro and Councilman Iven. This is an embarrassment. If anybody's been reading newspapers, what's been going on with Watertown and Waterbury? What did the judge, three judges say to the town of Watertown? Basically, pay the damn bill. That's the way it is. And tonight, item number eight should be tabled and then that item should be brought to the people for discussion. Second of all, question is, since the subcommittee of the city council does not have public comment, my question is why? We have a resolution 143-188, which was invented because of my speaking back then in 2018. This meeting is open to the public, the public has a right to speak. Not like the last meeting a few minutes ago where we only have the right to watch other people talk, which is our public servants. That meeting is a sub-meeting of the city council and resolution 143-188 should apply. In fact, at that meeting previously, everything was titled, and there's Chairwoman Annie Ruette, as a discussion only, not to be, not to be discussed and moved to public hearings or whatever. The people reading the agenda on the internet are looking at it as no problem, it's a discussion, I'll attend the next one. But a few of the items have been moved to a public hearing. And the disrespect of we, the people, not being allowed to comment at an open public meeting is pretty disrespectful. And since the committee is of the city council, resolution 143-188 shall apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Zurich. Anybody else from the public wishing to address the board?
I don't know.
Mr. Royals.
This is pretty sad because these same people would be arguing with us, how come? And nobody says it and they don't show their face.
Yeah.
Which is not right. I have one question, Mr. Magistrally, from the first session. On that fair rent deal, has the new major disaster of our tax increase been figured into that for the people that are figuring up what they're going to charge people for rent? This was done prior to that, right?
Yeah, I don't know what you mean, but the ordinance has nothing to do with taxes, but it has to do with the rental.
So your rental of a piece of property, if you're any type of a landlord, you're going to figure what that house costs you. Okay, if you're banging another thousand onto it.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not going to get into.
Yeah.
An argument with you about it, but.
No, no.
There's going to be a public hearing.
Yep.
On the fair rent commission, on that fair rent ordinance, and you know, that would be the time to raise whatever concerns you have.
But what I'm at, wasn't that done before the new taxes came out, right?
It was drafted before, it was drafted originally like three years ago.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, and I don't care.
Wouldn't be any different.
Mm-hmm.
But anyway.
Okay, no, that's.
You can talk about it at the public.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to cut it down, I'm just trying to say, a lot of people, I've talked to many people that own a lot of rental units, when you're talking a thousand dollars more they're paying this year, they can't give it away, you know, to what they're doing. You can only eat so much. Last thing for me, back to that same thing that Mr. Ben Zurich talked about, when you sell something or give or turn over, you don't get it back. If we, we've been paying, paying, paying recently, of course, we haven't even finished paying for our last deal with the public works, with all the new changes that have been made down at the sewer plant, you give it away. have been made down at the sewer plant. You give it away, it's gone. I don't think people are ever going to stop going to the bathroom. So it's something you can charge for, as long as you own it for the rest of eternity, city of Torrington can own it. But they've got to do it where they're getting the money it costs extra, way more than they're doing now, selling it to Litchfield and Harrington it by the gallon. We're the people of Torrington who pay for this, and ours is way higher. It does not make any sense to me at all that we can be charged more for what we're producing. Look at Northeast Utilities. How many years back, they sold all their power generating plants, everything, including the waterways, to all their big people in Northeast Utilities. Well, guess what? They've all been bought back at a measurable, crazy amount, not even measurable, to get it back so they could produce electricity again without renting from their upper echelon that work for their company. You do the same thing here. We are a business, like I've said many times before. I was totally against this deal when Goshen wanted to come down through. If we do this kind of thing with Litchfield, the next thing we're going to hear is they're going to say, "Well, now it's going to Torrington, who cares? We can let Litchfield do it, let Goshen do it." It's not going to happen. As long as I'm around here, they're not going to put their stuff through our systems. I just do not buy it. I'll go as far as I have to against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Royals. Anyone else from the public? Hello, Mr. Hayes.
Good evening, Kevin Hayes. Well, it goes along the same lines as a business decision. We have a product, another town wishes to purchase it or rent it. So strictly business, we charge more than what Torrington residents pay. I have a two-family, one-bedroom on each floor. I get charged right now the same amount for sewer user fee as a family of four. So use that as an example to Litchfield. They now have a product, or wish to purchase our product, charge them accordingly. As the chief explained earlier, that he's changing some of his fees to create a revenue. Well, we should be using this to create a revenue along the same lines. In the past, other towns have been charged less. And again, that's why some of that really hurts me. At my house, two people, energy-efficient equipment, energy toilet, use very little water and washing machine. I get charged the same as a family of four. So again, how are we going to be charging Litchfield? Are they on wells? So you're going to say, "How much water are they using?" Charge them more than what we have. Why? They have to pay for our infrastructure that we already outlaid money for. So again, think of it as business and creating a revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. I just want to clarify what Mr. Hayes said, Kevin. We're not raising fees to generate revenue. My goal to raise fees is to be a deterrent to people, to prevent them from committing violations. That's the whole purpose of raising fees, is to avoid, so that people will not commit the parking violations, so that they won't park in front of a fire hydrant, so they won't do over, they won't park over the meters. You know, we're not in the fee raising, we're not in the revenue generating business. Fines are made to act as a deterrent, to keep people from doing, from breaking the law and from breaking the violations that occur. So I just want to clarify that, that I'm not looking to rate, I'm not looking to generate, we're not looking to generate revenue as a police department. We're looking at public safety, we're looking at making sure that pedestrians, vehicular traffic are safe in our community. And that's what fines are for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Still open to the public for comment?
I know.
Why do we, being we own their systems, why don't we just hand the bills to the people of Litchfield and to the people of Harrington? Why do we have to go and build a city? The water bills, water company charges each person. And the other thing, which makes this is really crazy, I have buildings that have no water in them, but because there's a sewer hook to them, I have to pay a sewer use fee at $400 and something dollars. Other people are paying for using it, like you said with the wells. Sorry, I didn't remember that before.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, I'm going to close the public comment at this point, since we've been around the room. All right, let's move on to item number two. I will entertain.
Councilman, I'd like to use the rest of my time
No, I
to make a comment. I have 10, we have 10 minutes?
No.
How many minutes did I use?
We have three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
10 minutes according to resolution 143-188. Is it anybody reading?
I believe that was modified.
It was not modified.
At a council meeting, it was.
It was not modified at a council meeting. It is published on this city website.
I'm not going to engage with you, Mr. Benzurk.
Excuse me. I am dictating the laws that you approved. You approved that December 17, 2018, did you not? You were here present.
Not engaged.
It's 10 minutes per public comment, unless there is an insubordinate amount of people. Insubordinate, whatever, I forgot exactly. Like Mr. Glenn Royall just made a comment, I'd like for this council to take a look at number eight, which has not been discussed in front of the public for over two years, and the expiration date with Litchfield was 10 years ago. So this has been dragging its feet for 10 years, and the public has not been allowed to comment for the last two to three years. And running this through the wringer like it is tonight needs to be tabled until the next time. We are losing millions of dollars. I have all the facts. I've discussed this with you, Councilman Iveyne. I've discussed it with Paul Cavanero, Councilman. And it's kind of bad he's not here tonight. It's very important that when we own it, according to the state's definition, we charge anything we want to. There's no limit. So please table it for later. Thank you.
All right, public hearing is closed, and we're moving on to item number two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from July 7, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. Do I have a second? Do I have a second to approve the regular minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. All right, so motion is made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries, and one, I'm sorry, the abstention goes to Councilwoman Spino. Motion carries. Item three, I will entertain, I'm going to take this in two parts.
Oh, I need to abstain from the minutes as well.
Oh.
You're at a
So, all right, I'm sorry, the motion on item two, we have an abstention from Councilwoman Spino and an abstention from Councilwoman Rouette.
Correct.
And three voting in favor, Councilman Oliver, Councilman Waldron, and Councilman Iveyne. Thank you. Item three, A, I will entertain a motion, and I'm going to modify this from what's written here. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Stephen M. Audia, Christopher Smedic, and Rick Dalaval as citation hearing officers pursuant to Code of Ordinance, Chapter 1-11, subsection B, with a term set to expire December 31, 2026.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Any questions or comments?
Can you bring us through the citations? What, how is that organized? What's the subject matter of this group?
I was looking at something else.
Oh, okay. In terms of citation hearings, how is that conducted? What are the, what is the subject matter of citations in general?
So it could be blight citations. It could be citations for violation of zoning regulations, inland wetland regulations, pretty much any regulation. I think the police department has their own procedure for hearing appeals, but most everything else that the city does, ordinance enforcement of whatever kind, so blight, inland wetlands, zoning, those are the types of matters that would come before these hearing officers.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments before I call the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 3B, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation to compensate citation hearing officers $250 for each matter they hear. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne. So I have a motion and a second. Questions?
Is there any compensation, is there compensation at this point?
No.
Given to hearings?
No.
So this is no?
This is no. There is a provision in the ordinance that allows us to do this, and I will only add that it has been our experience that it's very difficult to find people to do these hearings, particularly because most of them have to occur during the day, and the matter, matter content, subject matter content, you content, you really do have to be up to speed on the types of matters. So we do find that it's an incentive that would make it a little bit easier for us to fill these positions and retain a hearing officer who's been properly trained and understands the content.
So can you provide an example for the hearing officer? I know you said for any hearings.
Yes.
Right, so we've, Fair Rent Commission, no, those hearings are from, forget that. The blight, the blight commission, the blight task force, we have a blight enforcement officer who issues notices of violations. And then if the person doesn't cure the blighted situation within the timeframe in the notice of violation, she can issue a citation that imposes a daily penalty. And the person who is the subject of that, the property owner, has the right to request a hearing. And so that is a matter that would come before these hearing officers. And, you know, essentially, it's, is there really a violation of the statute? They could argue, "Well, my property isn't really blighted." Even, you know, the statute and the ordinance provides what constitutes a blighted condition on the property, but they have the right to appeal that. We've had zoning violations that went to these, a hearing officer. You know, one example was there was a property down on Oak Avenue that was a commercial property, and the individual who owned it was living there as a residence. And so that was a zoning violation, because it was a commercial property, not a residential property. So he was issued violations, citations, he appealed from those citations, and the hearing officer had to decide whether to, you know, uphold his appeal or uphold the action of the zoning enforcement officer. So those are a couple of examples of what comes before these hearing officers.
I would add that some of these hearings can go for a couple hours and more.
Well, that's when you say for each matter. So would have, you know, that particular incident had two different, you know, times that they needed to have, would they be paid $250 both times or on the matter?
It's a flat fee.
So I just think of, so what about the assessment appeals?
Not the same.
Different.
Entirely different.
That would be good because of the number of appeals that have occurred.
Yeah. And those, those members of the Board of Assessment Appeals do receive payment. It's an hourly rate. So for every hour that they work for the city of Torrington, they are paid a stipend.
Know that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's in the budget.
So is this in the budget, now that you mentioned it?
So these fees, I would recommend be paid out of the blight funds. So where the blight fines are collected, those funds would be available. And the same could hold true for the zoning, any zoning fines. So instead of coming out of a budgeted or taxpayer's pocket, pay it from the very funds that are impacted.
Do you have an estimated annual amount on that, this ballpark?
You mean of what the hearing?
How many matters?
Total cost.
On how many hearings there are.
And it varies widely.
Yeah.
So I would say, in the last three years, we've probably had three blight hearings. It's not frequent, which is another reason why it's nice to find a hearing officer that will take the time to be trained, understand the subject content, and be available when needed. And we've had some turnover, you know, in the past. Mr. Smedic has been a hearing officer for us for a little while, for quite a while, and he's done two of those hearings that I mentioned. Tim Waldron served as a hearing officer, but it's always conflicted with his work schedule. And at times, the reason we're looking to appoint three, at times, there's a conflict of interest, and hearing officers decline because it's a conflict of interest.
And what's the training for a hearing officer? What's the time that?
I think that, you know, obviously, sitting down with corporation counsel, you know, going through, making sure that they clearly understand the ordinances, sitting down with not only corporation counsel, but the enforcement officer, depending whether it's a zoning enforcement or blight enforcement, sitting down with them and understanding the process for identifying blight, sending out notices of violation, sending out citations. So that would be all in-house training.
So can, can this vote actually, when you talk about the compensation, can you add that it would be from the, these collected versus, you know, that way it's
Clearly, I define where the
Where the revenues come from.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would answer your question.
Yes.
So then, then the modification to the motion which was made by Councilman, was it Waldron and Iveyne? Excuse me, David Oliver and Iveyne. Would you modify your motion to read to approve the recommendation to compensate citation hearing officers $250 for each matter they hear to be paid from the fees or fines collected from the citation?
Amended, so amended.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
So amended.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second, so amended.
Yeah. We're good?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jeremy DeCarle as an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a term set to expire May 19, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's reappointment of Ashley Clement as a sealer of weights and measures for a two-year term set to expire December 15, 2025. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments?
Well, this is one of my favorite subjects that I like to question about.
Yes.
I really don't need a refreshment on that, but
For the public?
Yeah, maybe we could just explain what this is.
Yeah. So the sealer of weights and measures actually does, they are required statutorily to go out into the public in any business that has a scale or a metered operation. So grocery stores, they're weighing your deli meats, or they're weighing fish or meats. At a gas station, they check the pumps, they check the air dispensers, and they actually have to report. So it's an annual inspection, and they have to report and file that report with the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to refer the proposed acquisition of the Torrington Volunteer Fire Department property to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a CGS Section 824 review.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, okay. I don't think this was the motion that I was looking for. Wasn't I looking for authorization to proceed with the acquisition and refer this? So, motion is made and seconded.
Do you want to call a do-over?
Yeah. Yeah, will you withdraw your motion and your second?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. The motion I was looking for is vote to authorize the mayor to proceed with the acquisition of the Torrington Volunteer Fire Department property and contingent on the section eight dash two four review at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Ivene. Okay, the floor is open for discussion. And I'll only explain the reason that I'm trying to get your authorization to proceed with the acquisition is there is quite a bit of work that the lawyers have to do with regard to the legal paperwork. The Planning and Zoning Commission is not going to be meeting until, is it August 20th? I think it's that third Wednesday of August. So we want to be able to proceed with all of the paperwork, so once that eight-two-four finding has been completed, we can then move forward with acquisition. Does that make sense?
No. Any concerns about the property itself, or is this basically procedural?
No, this is procedural. The section eight-two-four is just so that the Planning and Zoning Commission can look at it through the lens of compliance with our plan of conservation and development or any of our zoning regulations. Obviously, it's been a firehouse since 1957 or 1960 something when it was built, 61 when it was built. And as far as the environmentals, we did do the phase one assessments. The report came back with, you know, no concerns. Obviously, lead paint and some asbestos may be an issue, but the expenses would be not extraordinary. And acquisition really should happen within 90 days of that assessment having been received. And Jamie, I'm not sure, when did we receive that phase one? Was it in June? Yeah. So I just want to make sure that we're moving along and staying within those timelines, if that makes sense to everybody. Yeah.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm curious, we're just talking about the physical property, what about the, you know, the assets, you know, within the Torrington Fire Department? What happened to those? We're not on the Board of Public Safety, but I am interested in knowing with what has happened to them and hopefully consideration to our other volunteer fire department.
Yes. So I don't see David, I don't see Chief Tripp on, but, you know, I really, I think I feel like I put you on the spot every time I say, make sure you're at the meeting. So Jim Potter, who is a commissioner for Torrington Volunteer Fire Department?
So in regards to Drakeville, and I'm kind of disappointed because I have heard rumors that they're telling people, we haven't given them anything, but we have turned over numerous sets of gear, although it's not interior certified equipment, they've gotten more than enough gear from us, all of it, as a matter of fact, to start out their new firefighters that they get. We've turned over five-inch hose to them, other fittings, we do have more stuff we plan on sending to them once the career department has a chance to go through all the equipment on the trucks to see what they may need. This week, we expect by the end of the week that all the vehicles will be turned over to the city. And so that's a pumper, which if we were to sell it, we probably could get well over $100,000 for, a brush truck, which probably could get $40,000 for or more, and then, of course, two fire police mans, along with all the equipment that's on all of those vehicles. So. So it's the, you know, as we stated right from the beginning, our goal is to enhance the response and fires, fire, technically, I guess, really the medical service on the east end of town now, so if that can happen, that'd be great. And so, yeah, we are moving along.
And I didn't mean to, I, I guess we also want to sustain a volunteer fire department. And if equipment could enhance the volunteer fire department, and it was your mission to have that in the Torrington area way back when, I just, you know, not that I'm, have an opinion one way or the other, but it's the, well, I sort of do, but it feel like I would hope that there would still be consideration for the larger assets of the Torrington Volunteer Fire Department given to the one and only volunteer fire department left to enhance their response time.
Well, that would be true, I suppose, if there was a career department on the east end of town, but because of the budget cuts and all that, they need all this equipment to be able, and I realize it might be a year or two, or maybe never happen, I don't know. But our feeling is that that department was started by people that, and it was supported by the taxpayers at the east end of Torrington, and citywide, of course.
By many volunteers.
By many volunteers. But it was also through tax dollars, through donations, that's what supported, especially the east end people donated to that city and that, to that department, and that's the only way they could have acquired all of this equipment, so we'd like to see that equipment.
smaller donations of, you know, I said, many of the east end people, including my father, who started it. And those of us in the east end want to do monetary, continue to do monetary, you know, contributions, so I guess in respect to, you know, it's your commission's decision to do this, so I respect that. I guess when I was asking about the property, I didn't know if we were just talking about the physical property, I think that was my original question and not the assets.
Yeah, and the property we are turning over to the city also, we're in the process of, like the mayor said.
Yeah, I'm a huge advocate to keep some fire service on the east end, and I'm not on the Board of Public Safety, but I figured for the record, or I want to put that, I want to say that, you know, because losing you is, is, is really, I think, very hard for our community, that thing.
Oh, absolutely, but when you can't, when people aren't volunteering.
I know.
You know, it's.
Thank you for.
And I think I've, I've said it before, is that I believe that the residents in that side of town have pretty much aged out of the, the service. It really is true, you know. So it's unfortunate, and hopefully, the, the career department and the city will be able to figure out a way to man that station in some way and enhance the service on that end of town. Because, you know, really, it's, it's all the commercial up along, up and down East Main, you've got convalescent homes, several schools, industrial parks, they're all serviced by that side of town, so. It's, it's unfortunate, but it's, could end up being a win-win for, for everybody.
Yeah. And Jimmy, just thank you, you know, for your years of sort of sticking with it.
And just to clarify, because, because no department in the city of Torrington can own real estate or assets. All assets and real estate is owned by the city of Torrington, not the Torrington Fire Department, not the Torrington Police Department, not the Board of Education. All assets are owned by the city, and that's why it's this council's decision as to whether or not to acquire that property. And to your point, the Board of Safety can certainly make decisions about staffing and operations, but it's this council's responsibility to make the decision as to whether or not you want to acquire that property for that purpose.
Yeah, and I would like to acquire it, but not necessarily for any other purpose other than for fire service.
And those are the terms that, as I said, the reason I was looking for a modification of the notice, excuse me, the motion, was to allow the attorneys to continue to go through those negotiations. Because when I met with the commissioners, there was a strong desire from the commissioners that this property be used to enhance fire service. So we talk about, you know, how do we ensure that happens? We can take the property and say, we plan on doing fire service, they want to see an execution of that plan, so we can talk about reversionary language, you know? If we don't get fire service up there within a certain period of time, property can revert back to the volunteer fire department, and they can dispose of it as they see fit. But I can, with a great deal of confidence, say that the Board of Safety are all in the same thought, school of thought as you, that there should be east end coverage. The, you know, we are now about to embark on the search for a new fire chief, and I know for a fact, and I have a meeting with the Board of Safety this Wednesday, that that is a high priority. Can that new fire chief figure, make this east end coverage happen within the next nine months, 12 months? So I, I agree with you, and I think those are all not only worth having a discussion in this public forum, but again, because it is this council's decision as to whether or not you want to own that property, that that sets the stage for everything else the Board of Safety needs to do.
So there's no way we can put in the language of the acquisition that it be for fire service purposes?
I think that what, how we'll cover that is through the actual language in either the contract or the deed itself, that there would be the reversionary language.
We would see that language, would it come before the council again, the Board of Safety?
I don't know, what do you think?
I think that when the time comes and we reach an agreement with the volunteer department, you know, their attorney and I will be working on an agreement, and that probably would come back to the council.
There you go, we can do that.
You could see what that agreement looks like, because it's, it's going to impose obligations on the city, some monetary, some, you know, a lot of obligations on them, and and it could even be, you know, to the extent that there are negotiations, I would imagine some of that we probably would discuss, you would discuss in executive session until we have an agreement, because it's all going to be about negotiations. So there's a lot of room to, a lot of discussion that will happen.
Thank you.
Just quickly, next steps after acquiring the property, we have a planning grant in process?
So, I'm sorry, is?
Is there a planning grant for taking next steps on the building and upgrades, necessary upgrades to outfit our city firemen?
So, and I see that Chief Tripp is on this call, and right now, he's, you know, in the, he's the interim chief, and he's been meeting with our facilities director, they've been to the site, and, I mean, there's a lot of work that has to happen up there to make this a full firehouse, you know, dormitories, kitchen, we have to talk about, it's on a septic, we have to talk about a sewer connection, there's a lot of work that has to happen. So when I say nine months to a year, I mean, we can go through acquisition and have that closed by September 1st, but doing all that other work is going to take a little bit of time. So acquisition first, and, and with that acquisition, Torrington Volunteer Fire Department has been so incredibly generous and so focused on what they feel is the right use of not only this property, but the other assets that they own, including cash. You know, so we also have to look at what's available to turn over to the city to offset the cost of doing those upgrades and making that a full fit out for fire service, 24/7 fire service. Does that, does that make sense, Jamie? Yeah. And Chief Tripp, I know, I saw you on the call, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add.
I don't think so, Mayor, I think you covered most of it. I am, I am in the process of, of building a plan to present to Board of Safety on east end coverage, that's all I'll say about that for now, but it is in the works. And Torrington's been a great, great asset and great partner, and, you know, if it wasn't for them, this wouldn't probably be real at this point.
So it's a combination of, you know, capital investment, and then, as Chief Tripp just intimated, you know, what is the long-term cost for operations? So that's a budgetary impact that needs to be discussed, but most likely won't impact our budget until FY '27.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A lot of work is going to come back to this board, but of, of course, the Board of Safety, I think, is the, you know, the, the oversight board by charter, so it'll go through Board of Safety and come to the City Council. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and thank you, Jim, I really appreciate that you were here. All right, item seven, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143273 for the temporary employment of Attorney Stephen Byrne of Byrne &amp; Byrne LLC at a rate of $200 per hour for inland wetland zoning enforcement action.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Ivene, and the floor is open for questions.
Have we done this before, specialized attorney group, or?
Yeah, we use outside counsel for several things, you know, the main one that comes to mind is our appeals from the tax assessment, you know, we use a firm in Litchfield that handles all of those. You know, this, this is a situation where it's a, and it may not turn into anything, so this is, this is giving the authority to retain Stephen Byrne if necessary, the inland wetlands, it's an inland wetland zoning issue, they're still working with this property owner, hoping to work out an agreement with them, but they're not very confident about that, because it's a property owner who's been very resistant in the past and caused basically a lot of, a lot of problems. So they, they kind of just want to be ready to move if need be, there, there isn't anything immediately pending that's, that's going to be initiated, but they just want to be prepared so that if they need an attorney, you know, quickly, they can use Attorney Byrne. So for me, it's, it's a combination of, it's kind of out of my wheelhouse, so to speak, you know, the issues that'll be raised are not things that I'm really familiar with, so my confidence level in handling that isn't really so great. And also, I have kind of a personal conflict of interest, it's not a technical conflict, but the, the property owner is somebody that I and my family are friendly with, and it'd be better if I just weren't involved.
Understood.
And the rate is pretty good, the, the experience that Attorney Byrne has is pretty impressive. We did, you know, it's not, we're not expecting it to cost more than $10,000, so we didn't do an RFP for it. And we did talk to Attorney Kevin Nelligan, who's worked with us in the past on other things, and he was right in the same ballpark for the hourly rate. And Attorney Byrne is somebody that Jeremy Lightford has worked with in the past in his experience in other towns on inland wetland and zoning issues, so it seemed like a good fit. And again, it may, it may be that they're not need them, but if they do, they, they want to be ready.
Okay.
They are estimating the enforcement action to be $25,000 to $45,000.
Is that what he said in his letter? Oh, he said it could be, depends on how aggressively it gets defended, so at this point, there's really no way to know. And as I say, it could be that they're not going to need him at all.
And I would say in this particular situation that we have pending, this is a chronic violator, chronic, like, refusal to comply, and is continually brought before the Inland Wetland Commission and has, I want to say burned, you know, all those bridges to gaining compliance. So I guess if the council is so inclined, and you're worried about the amount, you could say up to $9,999, and if it requires a motion to allow us to expend more, we can bring it back.
That was just the number that corporate counsel had said, that it might be $10,000, so I was choosing.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all, yes.
This is what they're estimating.
You know, if there are appeals, you know, certainly at this point. You know, if there are appeals, you know, certainly at this point, you know, an, you know, an appeal to the Superior Court is one thing, but if, if the court finds in favor of the city and then there's an appeal of that court's decision, I can certainly, and then it would take it to that next level. It might be more expensive.
Is the appeal considered a separate move, let's say, for that dollar amount threshold? Or is it considered all part of the same action?
It's, would be all the same action. You certainly wouldn't want to hire a different attorney if there were an appeal from a Superior Court decision. You'd want to stay with the same attorney.
I would like to add, and I didn't make the motion, but, you know, if we could amend it to the $10,000.
You're on a roll tonight.
Oh, I guess.
So, so the motion was made by Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Ivyne. Will you amend your motion to limit the total expenditure to $10,000?
Yes, I'll amend my motion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Motion made and amended. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, and you know, as we, just to finalize the conversation on that, as we progress with these proceedings, you know, we can report back to the council on the status of those legal proceedings. So, now we're going to move into item eight. And before I call this motion, is Ray Drew on the call? I did see him on the call. Good, okay. All right. So, I will entertain a motion by the City Council here in acting as Water Pollution Control Authority to accept and authorize the mayor to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Litchfield for the shared use and management of wastewater treatment services. Do I have the motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ivyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for questions.
Just taking on Mike Benzerick's questions, the nature of agreement, owner versus leasing. Can we have a perspective on this agreement? Is this considered a user fee or a participation in a user group? How do we perceive this type of agreement?
Okay, so Ed, thank you.
The question's about why is there shared assets?
Yes.
I think, I think the point was, first of all, they're going to pay a portion of any capital improvements on the plant. So, that makes them a partner in that way. And also, we, it was included, it was a map of any collection section that they're, they have flow in, that they may be impacting. So, in that way, the flow comes down New Litchfield Street or Felicity Lane, they would get, they would be charged for any capital expense on any of that, that area. We were looking at it same way, any of the flow, any of the assets coming down through Harrington, although that's, this isn't touching Harrington.
And the infrastructure outside of our city limits are managed by those town entities in Litchfield and Harrington.
Yes.
So, they're, they're not being managed by Torrington?
No.
And part of the fee that those towns will allocate to their residents is all encompassing our fee and the maintenance of, of that infrastructure, correct? Whether it's a pumping station or pipes?
Yeah. And there, currently, there is no pumping stations coming down from Litchfield. There's a small amount of flow from Harrington hitting one of our pumping stations. And when I've, when we've incurred capital expense, that did get billed back to them at that annual bill.
And the nature of the contract separates out the overhead charges of our treatment and, you know, basically whatever's within our city limits.
Yeah. And in this agreement, it states for all, for operation and maintenance charges, they will never pay less than Torrington. We're not, of course, we're not, we don't bill their residents. We don't bill them for capital improvements we're doing on Winston Road or Brightwood Avenue. It doesn't affect them.
Mm-hmm. So, there's a per-flow charge, so it's in millions of gallons on their, your annual basis.
I was looking like, on Litchfield, looks like an average of around $8 million a year. Just put that in perspective, we treat an average in the last couple of years, 1.7 billion gallons in town. So, it's a very small percentage. They're, they're looking to lower their allocation. Their allocation was at 150,000. They're looking to lower it to 40,000.
Okay. And so, on these charges, they're purchasing capacity, correct? Okay. So, there's two separate, one is the actual flow realized and another is the overhead of our facilities charge.
Yes, you read it.
Yes. So, so to, to address Mike's point, that, you know, we're basically sharing the, the charges that all users are paying for this service?
Yes, for that, that portion, that portion of the-
Is there anything omitted in this process or in this contract that, that would not, otherwise, are we not able to charge something to Litchfield resident versus a Torrington resident?
No, no. I mean, like I said, there's a lot of assets. We pay here in Torrington, we have a lot bigger system. Litchfield, this example is they have their own treatment facility on the other side of their city. So, has no impact on what we're charging them. They're looking to go through their own upgrade. I mean, currently, currently, they're, you know, it was brought up about their sewer fee. Their sewer fee this year is $424 per year. Ours is $426. They're going through an upgrade process right now, so like, they're going to be facing quite a bit what we're facing when, when they finish that.
Yeah. And under these agreements, Harrington, Litchfield, we do not supply the bill per household. We respond in minute-
No, I don't think we legally can do that. Maybe Mike can speak to that. I don't think we could bill residents.
I can't speak to that without doing research, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's not necessary. Yeah, I, I get it. So, we're, we're, we basically have flow meters, we're measuring the flow and they're purchasing a certain capacity, even though they're well within that capacity limits.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And this isn't like we're, this isn't a Woodridge Lake situation where we're talking about running pipes down here. These pipes have been here since the mid-'80s, 40 years. They've been connected, so.
Okay. And you, do you have any concerns over any changes in this contract at this point?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ivyne. And just for the public that may be listening, the bills for this agreement, under the terms of this agreement are twofold. There's the ONM, the operations and maintenance, which is billed annually. And if you look at page 11, the section 4.1, it specifically states, "In no event shall the proportionate share be less than the rate set by the Torrington WPCA for operation and maintenance costs for 65,000 gallons or other allocation as may be amended by code." That 65,000 gallons is the standard that's used for all residential users and any commercial use that exceeds 65,000, their rates are reflected accordingly. So, again, there's no opportunity here, or I should say, we have written into this IMA a protection that in no event would their proportionate share be less than what the Torrington residents are paying. That's number one. Number two is on page nine, section 3.43, where it talks about the proportionate share of the shared facilities. And that would be an annual payment, and that's considered more of a capital expense. Those would be annual. And it includes, further down in 3.4.3, that Torrington shall send Litchfield an amortization schedule reflecting the annual debt service cost for those upgrades relative to those shared facilities. So, we're capturing everything. We're capturing the debt service proportionally. We're capturing capital expenses proportionally and we're covering the ONM annually.
Mm-hmm.
And this-
As far as shared services, it's not like Litchfield can come down and touch our equipment or vice versa, us go up there. That's clearly stated in this agreement.
Right. And shared facilities, not shared services, but shared facilities, you know, it's the pipeline. Once you hit that Torrington line, that shared facility is the pipes on this, on the Torrington side, you know? We don't have a pump station involved, but once it gets into our treatment facility, the proportional share based on use. So, they do not own the facility. The city of Torrington owns it. The WPCA owns it. This is an enterprise. WPCA owns it, but they are paying for the use of it, including those capital improvements. Other questions or comments? That about, and I don't know, Ray, I know that you jumped on this call. I don't know if you had anything to add to that, Ray?
Um, no. I mean, I, I think you summarized it well. I mean, you know, if anybody looks at their sewer use fee bill, it's broken up into three pieces, the ONM portion, the debt service portion, and the capital recovery charge. You know, as the IMA stated, and this was, you know, an area of high contention in that we ensure through the language that Litchfield would not pay anything less than any resident within Torrington. The debt service is a proportionate share based upon the design of the facility. The facility's designed for 7 million gallons a day. As Ed indicated, this IMA reduces Litchfield's allocation from 150,000 gallons to 40,000 gallons. So, it's, which is a less proportionate share of the debt service. What else that means is that frees up 110,000 gallons that was, has been locked down for years that now Ed and the WPCA can use to redistribute to development and growth within I, you know, we've, we've been working on this. There's been a lot of hiccups, but we have been work diligently, you know, with the previous Corporation Council, Michelle, to get this finalized. And we think that this is a good agreement. You know, as Ed had stated, this is not a new connection. Litchfield, we have been partners in treating Litchfield wastewater from Torrington Road and the Heart Drive communities for over 40 years. This is not new. So-
I think you are, you know, that was my question because this is not a new agreement. I know that it's reviewed by, you know, by this agreement every five years. That hasn't changed, has it, from previous agreements?
From previous agreements-
Forty, you said 40 years, but did we have this type of agreement 40 years ago?
We did. So, the first year, the first agreement dates back to the mid-'80s, prior to the 1994 upgrade of the treatment plant. And those agreements were 20-year agreements. They were locked in 20 years. That was the rate. In this agree, in this agreement, we had openers every five years. So, if there was a discrepancy, if there was some issue in the IMA that we felt either from Torrington's perspective that we need to tighten up or change, we could do a reopener on this particular agreement. So, that is, that is somewhat of a change from previous agreements.
I think, yeah, I think, and I appreciate that question from Councilwoman Ruette because I think, again, for the public, this is not new. We have been doing this for 40 years. These agreements have existed. It's just an updated agreement that needed to be executed. And to the point of the way this contract or this IMA was negotiated, I know that we had a number of executive sessions with members of the council. They may predate, you know, they may go back two years, but much of this language in here came from the council members in that executive session for, I know Councilwoman Ruette, you would have been on those, Councilman Walden would have been in on those. And I know that this language was very important to Councilman Cavanero, that in no event shall the proportionate share of the ONM be less than what our residents are paying. So, we did get feedback from the council in those negotiating executive sessions and this is the result of that.
That was, that was a point during these negotiations that was going in or wasn't, wasn't come here to the council.
Right. Other questions? We're good.
Just one, one last point Mike had made was charging outside entities more money than our residents. Is that feasible under this type of agreement that it would actually be a value plus to our residents to charge outside users?
Well, so on an annual basis, the budget is adopted and in that budget, the recommendation for user fees. So, I would say, yeah, on an annual basis, you could look at what those user fee charges are. I don't know, this language says, "In no event shall the proportionate share be less." It certainly doesn't say that it couldn't be more.
Okay.
And I think that those would be annual budget decisions.
I think that would have to be dressed in this. If you wanted it to be some set amount more, would you-
Okay.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay. We're good? No questions from the Zoom room?
No.
Okay. All right. Then I'm going to call this motion made by Councilwoman Ivyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you all. I appreciate your questions on this. Item nine, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and approve the emergency replacement of the main cooling tower fan shaft assembly by AirTemp Mechanical of Berlin, Connecticut in the amount of $25,916, utilizing the Connecticut State DAS bid list and funded out of the capital reserve.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Second, uh, questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I will entertain a motion by the City Council here in acting as a Water Pollution Control Authority to approve the following payments from Fund 490. This would be the invoice 244636 to Wright Pierce in the amount of $1,637.08 for Harris Drive Pump Station Design and invoice 245146 to Wright Pierce Engineering in the amount of $16,752.38 for the Winston Road Force Main Tunnel Project.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ivyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
Can we have an update on Harris Pumping Station? Not, not that I'm questioning these charges, just that-
Sure.
I'm just curious about the status of the project.
We're at the end of the, almost at the end of the planning stage. I've been in contact with EPA, working on that grant piece. The, the cost of this project is a lot more than that grant. So, the next step is going to be apply for clean water funding to, to continue. But the planning side of it is, is done.
Okay.
One of these bills here is, I know you're not asking a question, the Winston Road Force Main. We just look like we, the city engineer is able to put that tunnel in a grant, so we're going to separate those two projects going forward. We're going to run the Force Main separate from the tunnel. We're going to run the Force Main separate from the tunnel. I know you were asking a question, I think, last meeting about the-
Yeah.
The tunnel.
Well, we liked the idea of the tunnel.
Yeah.
So, and wasn't there-
That might hold up the tunnel a little bit.
Okay.
The Force Main's what's more important to me.
Yeah. Because you did have a concern over one of those pipes going under-
Yes, one's broken currently. If the second one was to break, and it has had, historically has had breaks on either side if it broke under that road, we're going to have a problem.
Okay. And how bad is that problem?
Well, you're familiar with that area, I know. So, those pipes are under where the railroad bed was. And you could look down those banks and you could see how deep of a dig that would be. Winston, we know Winston Road is a major throughway around here.
Yes. Okay. Good. What, do you have a total cost on the project year-to-date? Because we're getting piecemeals that we're approving along the way, but not really a cumulative amount. Like, are we close to where we-
Can I send that out tomorrow?
Yeah, that's fine.
The total expense up to this point?
Yeah, I'm just curious if we're on track on that and just where we're at with the timeline. Is these things going to happen this year? Or just, you know, it's happening phases here?
Absolutely. I'll send that to the mayor's office. She's supposed to tomorrow.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed. So, if there are no other questions on the motion, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you. Before we get into item 11, I need to get a couple additional agenda items added. I have one, two, three, all related to the ordinance committee work. So, item number one, I need to add to the agenda by two-thirds vote to schedule a public hearing for ordinance, Chapter 24 Fair Rent Commission.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions to add this to the agenda? Hearing none. I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. So, the motion that I would be looking for would be a motion to schedule a public hearing on August 4th, 2025 to consider changes to ordinance, Chapter 24, entitled Fair Rent Commission. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions or comments? Or anything from the ordinance committee chair?
No, I appreciate the review of the ordinance by the Fair Rent Commission members in our corporate council. This has been going on since we actually implemented or adopted this ordinance at the time that the state had created their statute. So, I appreciate their work and look forward to the public's comment.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, the second item that I need to add to the agenda, again, by two-thirds of a vote, to schedule a public hearing for ordinance, Chapter 20 Economic and Community Development Commission and repeal of Chapter 3A, the Arts and Culture Torrington Commission.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And again, this is to add it to the agenda. If there are no questions?
Comment, Mayor?
Do you want to comment during the real motion? All right, let's add it to the agenda so we can hear your comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now I'm looking for that motion to schedule the public hearing on August 4th, 2025 to consider changes to ordinance, Chapter 20 Economic and Community Development Commission, and to repeal Chapter 3A, thereby dissolving the Arts and Culture Torrington Commission. Is that motion made?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And turning it over to the chairman of the ordinance committee.
And again, this has been an ongoing issue for the Economic Development Commission and the Arts Culture Commission just in the recruitment of members. And obviously, we want to support our Economic Development Director and move forward with merging these two committees, which is the elimination of that chapter, as noted in the-
3A, yeah.
And really combining, you know, the function of that committee to the E D C. So, they've been patient and proposed to the ordinance committee for discussion, and we moved it to the council for the opportunity for the public to comment on this. This, I want to say merger, but, so that's it.
Thank you. Questions? Hearing none. I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the final addition. And again, this is by two-thirds of votes to schedule a public hearing for ordinance, Chapter 194 Vehicles and Traffic.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Again, this is just to add it to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the motion that we are looking for is to, a motion to schedule a public hearing on August 4th, 2025 to consider changes to ordinance, Chapter 194, entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. And back to the ordinance chair.
So, again, this is an ordinance that Sergeant Boltis and presented tonight by our chief. It's a 17-page ordinance of which had some technical changes, although now changing some of the fees that, you know, really haven't been updated for many years. We're going to find out how many by the chief when it comes to the public for a hearing and for the council. But this has been a lot of work. Again, I've been encouraging Sergeant Boltis and the chief to really look at ordinances that need to be updated based on language. I mean, they had Franklin Street in there, which is no longer a street. They had some outdated language in that ordinance which really needed to be amended and corrected. So, we're moving it forward for a public hearing.
Are speed cameras on that, in that ordinance?
No.
No, okay.
No, that was a separate committee of which we tabled for another ordinance meeting and discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a bigger discussion.
Okay.
Other questions? I'll just add a comment. I was a little surprised when the ordinance committee agenda and agenda supporting documents was thicker than tonight's council agenda. So, I appreciate the work that this committee is doing. It's important work.
The work of the people of your team-
Yeah.
-who have presented the amendments, including your corporate counsel. Give him a little, throw him a little spotlight.
All right, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We've finished our additions to the agenda. Going back into item 11, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And in the room, I don't have my glasses. Yes, I do. Chief Baldwin, it's so nice to see you. Anything to add this evening? Okay. I see Ed stepped out. Anything, Jamie, from Facilities Direct, Director? Ed, anything to add with, from W P C A this evening? Okay, thank you. City Treasurer is here. Anything to add? Thank you. City Clerk's Office? Corporation Counsel?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, we're going to move right into item 12. And now I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go to the Zoom rooms first. Anything, Councilman Oliver?
Not tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Walden?
No, nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Ruette.
I'm down, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino?
Just a couple of things. We had a couple grant openings over the past couple of weeks. Vegas Restaurant has opened. So, highly recommend people go check that out. They have excellent empanadas. Also, we had the opportunity to tour the Sophia Building last week. And those apartments, the first resident has just moved in. And there's a couple other apartments that have already been rented and a couple that are still available. Vinnie Capletti did an incredible job at that location. He's the one that also owns the building next door. So, if you want to see photos, they're all online. But very excited to have more apartments available downtown for residents.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Iveyne?
I must admit, Vinnie Capletti is very enthusiastic about Torrington. He's a great advocate, talking about all the great things we have in the downtown area, building buildings, and the treasures we have. So, it's great to see him, appreciate that. Also, I just want to point out, I believe we see the saws on the road just outside City Hall, coming across the street, down Mason Street and down Main Street that way. And I believe that's all gas main, changeovers. It was my understanding. It was gas lines being replaced.
And Main Street, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, trying to get my bearings because I'm thinking Mason. All that work is, you know, relative to the railroad square project. But yes, utility work. And I know, it's always disappointing because D O T just repaved that road in the last five years, and it is opened up again. But I do understand that they are going to be repaving again from that point going north, I believe, past our commercial district and onto the Winston Road. But yeah, it is utility work.
Yeah, okay. Is there any other opportunities for us to address infrastructure under the road while that's being dug up?
Because all of that infrastructure was upgraded when they last, when they came in and paid five years ago. It may have been even a little bit longer that, it's when we put in the sidewalks on Main Street. Then D O T came on the heels of our sidewalk upgrades. So, all of those utility upgrades were made back then. You know, I think no matter how well you plan for these utility upgrades, you know, a gas line leaks or a new connection has to be done, they're back in that right of way. It's disappointing for everybody. Everybody that has to find a different route to get from one end of the city to the next. Or anybody who says, "My tax dollars are being wasted because we just did that work and now we're in that, you know, in that road again." I don't, I don't think so. I think all that work is done, and these were repairs more than improvements.
Oh, good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. I appreciate it. All right, moving on to item 13, I will entertain a motion to reopen the meeting to the public for comment on agenda items only. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're open, back open to the public on agenda items. To the public, anyone wishing to comment?
Two thing. So, you're basically saying there's, we are not turning over any part of our sewer system to anybody?
Correct.
Okay. But they're not paying for what infrastructure we already own? You know, everything we've owned for all the years, they're not paying anything towards what was done then? It all starts now?
No. The proportional share of the debt service for the improvements that we've made.
Just made.
The proportional share of the debt service. So, it's the clean water fund and any bond funds that were used to do those upgrades. The proportional share for the, uh, the Litchfield share will be billed to them on an annual basis. And then the O N M will relate to any of the shared facilities. So, any of the pipes that lead to the water treatment facility, the water treatment facility operation expenses, again, proportionally would be billed. And in no event will they pay less than the residents of Torrington are paying.
Okay, like they were?
Yes, yeah.
But are we forced to do this? Or you want to do this to make sure the reading, the writing is right? You know, why? Because we're still controlling it. We should be able to tell them, "Here's what we want, and that's it." Or do you feel it's better to put it in writing?
No, it has to be in writing. Yeah.
Final thing I have. I have to think back to those nights down here arguing with W D P C A and telling me how those pipes under the bridge are the kind that never break. And that night, Gordon Pepper, God bless his soul, was up there repairing it, and they argued with me, and they said it didn't happen. And we're working on this, we've got more millions in those pipes up there. But the pipes that never break, you know, I'm happy we're trying to do it in another way to fix the things. That tunnel deal may work because it was always to do with up and down. But it's so amazing to listen back. And they sat here and argued with me, telling me they never break. Thank you.
Never say never. All right, still open to the public, agenda items?
Good evening again. It's embarrassing that after what I dissertated in the beginning, you did not table this to another meeting or even a public hearing in regards to item number eight with this I M A. The Litchfield I M A expired 10 years ago. In December 2017, I started this charade. All you do right now is listen to Mr. Towsey and Mr. Ray Drew. You don't read or investigate because you are solely an acting W P C A. Actors belong on the stage at the Warner Theater. We, the people, are who you work for. Whenever we have a sewer fee change in the city of Torrington, there is always a, a public hearing. This I M A was just exposed to we, the people, on Friday.
This IMA was just exposed to we, the people, on Friday. We, the people, have now had time to understand it, including yourselves, based on the questions you've been asking of Mr. Towsey and Mr. Ray Drew. It's very, very important that when we pay four hundred and twenty-six dollars a year for our sewer fees, and yes, there is a line for O and M costs, there's a line for the sinking fund, and there's a line for debt service. How much is Litchfield paying in this IMA for renting our sewer pipes to get to our sewer plant? Because that's how you charge a regular fee. Unless they are going to start running their own pipe and spend twenty-five million dollars running a pipe to our sewer plant. How much are they being charged to use our sewer plant? They're basically only being charged to process a gallon of water. Can anybody here tell me how much it costs us to process a gallon of sewage? And you're our WPCA. You're the ones that make all the decision, and the mayor purposely over the past two years has been squealing this through. Because two years ago, there was people talking. Councilwoman Annie Ruette was here, so was Councilman Cavanaro here. Everybody else is fairly new. And this is pretty embarrassing that you made this decision. You have a chance to table it and bring it back for discussion because even I haven't, over two days, tried to figure out what this IMA is. They're not being charged to rent our manholes, to rent our sewer pipes, all different sizes. There was an investigation about five years ago that was proposed and pushed, and everything was just generic, generic, generic. We're still losing millions of dollars, even if they pay the same amount we do. Okay? We've invested in this sewer enterprise for a hundred years. Someone else wants to use it, start paying me for what I invested, not what's invested today or tomorrow. Okay? If I want to rent your car from you and pay you gas, are you going to agree with me? Of course not. You're going to charge me partial investment that you made into the car.
Three minutes?
Years ago, I tried to get, with the mayor here and Councilwoman Annie Ruette and Paul Cavanaro, to incorporate into the sewage ordinance, the mass.gov best practice IMA, which I've given to you also, Councilman Iveyne, which gives you an outline of how to construct an IMA. Mass.gov, the state of Massachusetts has mandated every municipality to use it, and they do use it. And when I own something, I tell you how much to pay. It's right in the state. Anything, doesn't matter, there's no legal. Now that you've approved this, and they're going to be similar to our fees as compared to the craziness it was years ago, is not adequate. Hopefully, this gets to the newspaper and hopefully the people are exposed because we were only warned of this three days ago. Not five days like our city charter states that I've gone over with you, Councilman Iveyne, many times. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to address the council this time? Seeing and hearing none. I'm going to move into item fourteen, there being no further business before the board. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Bye, good night.